Mr. Bearlock resigned his position, effectively opening the position. So this time, we would like the board to know we had two applicants apply for the position. After doing a review of the applications, we invited both individuals through for an interview and conducted an interview for that position. After having reviewed the applications and these interviews, we saw that one candidate definitely stood out above the other candidates. We had Boone stand up and really do a nice job. The thing that stood out in his application was he had relevant experience, he was a head coach, he had recent experience as a coach, and he's an educator, so we know that he's been professionally trained to work with kids. And those things just all came together that showed us that he was a quality individual. But beyond that, the answers to the questions in the interview were solid, really strong answers to his questions. And he also did a really nice job in terms of providing us with an example of a practice plan that he'd lay out. He came prepared for the interview and had a typed out sheet of what his practices would look like. The thing that we were able to see in that is that about sixty-five percent of his practice plan matched up very closely with what our kids are used to in their current practicing, matched up with what Coach Bearlocker has done. And one of the things that I believe is that Coach Bearlocker did such a nice job as a coach with our kids, that, you know, that continuity, if you could somehow find it, would be very beneficial to the kids that are currently in the high school program. That was very impressive to me, having seen that in the practice plan. And finally, the other thing that really stood out to me was that between the two candidates that we interviewed, one had a definite commitment to the summer program where they would be able to be available to take kids to camps and whatnot, and the other person did not have a very well-defined plan in that case. So with that, we noted that there was one candidate that stood out. And from there, we moved forward with checking the references on that candidate. The reference checks on that candidate panned out to prove very fruitful, and so at that point, the decision was made that there was no reason not to make the recommendation for hiring that individual. So at that point, the recommendation is to go ahead and recommend Boone Nelson as the head boys' basketball coach for the two thousand thirteen fourteen school year. And Mr. Bearlocker was a part of that, and if you would like to ask any questions of him, he's available here tonight before that.
Okay, so now we can have discussion. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Jay Dixon, lived in Florence for twenty years, and I coached here for ten years and stepped down when my second son was born to focus on my family. Those of you who've known me over the years in Florence can affirm that I'm blessed with a wonderful family and the love of the art of fly fishing and the game of basketball. Here tonight because I believe that strong leadership should be grounded in civility, integrity, and respect for each Florence School employee and prospective employee. Due diligence, decency, and due process should be a leader's foundation for all interactions with his or her present and future employees. Each deserves no less. The result is a healthy, vibrant school culture which serves the needs and dreams of its young people. It goes without saying, I would have been honored to have been chosen the varsity basketball coach, but I was particularly puzzled by the fact that no one bothered to contact my references, each of whom could speak to my knowledge of the game, my relationship with kids, and the areas I need to improve. Nevertheless, please know that regardless of the outcome of this board meeting, I will always support the academic and athletic life of this school. The Florence School community means a lot to me, and I'm confident that each of us will always share the responsibility of holding each other accountable to the highest possible standards. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Bryant?
I'd like to caution the board, this administration, this current administration, has a history of telling board members they've interviewed people who did not apply for the job.
Any further discussion? All right, someone called for the question?
Well, I wait for a couple, yeah, I have a little. I'd like to call in. I, uh, I'd never met Jay prior to this. I don't know how I've lived through all that too, we just have a cross paths, but he did, he did get a hold of me early in this process and via my email, and I did sit and listen to Jay a lot. He sent me a lot of information on himself, he sent me a lot of references, he sent me letters. I've got, I mean, I've there, I brought him in, it's endless, and he's got, I did take the time to call and ask about Jay, and he, it was, I mean, I, it was solid. I mean, I had nothing, it was phenomenal what he, what I found out about Jay. I felt it was kind of my responsibility, he was upset of how it went, he felt, he had a lot of issues. I sat and I listened to him, I gave him my email, I gave him my phone number and told him that, you know, I'll be happy to take all the information you have and look into this for you. I also, at the same time, requested from the office to see, to see all the other applicants after I talked to Jay. I requested that three times via email, and I, to this day, have not seen anything on this other, the coach that we're hiring, Boone Nelson. I did take the time to, my only resource was I Googled his name, I found out a little bit about him, it looks like he's from Colstrip. I got his record as a varsity coach was like twenty-five and sixty-something, don't have the exact, I do have him there if you need that. I don't believe he lives here, I don't, I just, to me, I don't, I don't have enough information here to go anything off of Boone Nelson. I got, I had a ton handed to me off of Jay. Listening to him, he's the most, one of the most passionate people I've ever met in the short two, three weeks that I've known him. Looking at his history here at Florence is phenomenal, his wife is a substitute teacher here, his children go here, he's coached endless, you know, it looks to me like his opportunity, in my opinion, was cut short. So my research into this, I'm not very comfortable with it, as a matter of fact, I mean, I'm more than uncomfortable if this is our hiring practice. The simple fact that no one even took the time to call his references, I've employed people and that's the very first thing I do on anybody, even if I don't even like them when they walk in the door, I give them the common courtesy of call up and see if maybe my impression of them's wrong. So that, that set, that did not set well with me at all. So I just wanted to let that know that that's, that's, that's the information I was, you'll be given time almost. Thank you. That was the information I was given as a board member. So Jay took the time to get to know me, I took the time back, I know nothing of Mr. Boone, I was never given, I didn't see his practice plan, I didn't see his, anything about him, I asked for his resume, I did not receive any of that back from the school. So based off of what you're giving me, I have nothing to support your guys' decision.
I was never told to bring a practice plan, I was loving to bring a practice plan. If you wanted to do an interview and answer questions about lifetime skills of kids, if there's something else I'm supposed to bring in and we'd like to see your practice plan, I'd love it.
No one asked you for a practice plan.
Okay.
Let me ask you a question. I may be out of realm here. Can I tell you my experience with this fellow here? Is it okay? My first experience with this fellow right here, I didn't know from Adam. Okay, walks into my house, wants to tell me how this Mr. Bearlocker is the worst guy in this community. Secondly, I don't see this kid in the gym other than doing negative things in front of my wife. We were, actually, we're going to leave this community if he got the coaching job. This is absolutely, what you're saying is false.
Who, I can't state his name, I'm not sure.
Robin Kirstofferson. He knows what he's talking about.
Okay, all right, guys, we've got to.
Show me into the class.
I'm sorry, sorry.
Hey, I just, that's all.
Hold on, hold on.
I just gave anything else about his personality.
I'm sorry.
Guys, yeah, we can't, we're not gonna, we can't go.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry, we can't go there. Does somebody else have something else to say that's not a personal? Yes, sir.
My name is Tone Olippi. I've lived in this community from the time that I was a fourth grader until I graduated from high school. I've known Jay Dixon since I was in seventh grade. I just want to say that I've, not seventh grade, ninth grade, somewhere in there. I wanted to say that he operates with the utmost integrity and was one of the most intense coaches I ever had, taught me a lot about the game, and I have every confidence that he would be an excellent head coach.
Thank you for that. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, my name's Boone Nelson, I'm the gentleman being recommended for the job tonight. I have been an educator and a coach the last nine years. The number that Mr. Reynolds told us throughout there, twenty-five and sixty-something, I can't tell you how incorrect that is. Again, nine years, six of those nine years have been winning seasons. The only thing I can think is that information probably came from Max Preps.
Yeah, that's all I have, I didn't say that.
If you look further into Max Preps, I was, I'm still Colstrip's coach, apparently I went five and seventeen last year.
You want to clear that up? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to add that.
I resigned into two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve school year. Again, I'm extremely excited for this opportunity. I've had the privilege over the last three weeks of getting to know these kids. I've met a lot of their parents, they're great kids, they got fantastic attitudes, they got tremendous work ethic that we've seen on the basketball court, and, you know, these kids display nothing but sportsmanship and teamwork, and they're going to be a great group of kids to work with. Coach Hanson, myself, since June first have taken the kids to twenty-one games so far this summer. This next weekend, we're going to Anaconda Friday and Saturday. The following weekend, we'll take, we're taking two teams to Frenchtown for a JV and a varsity tournament, and we'll be hoping to host a triangular scrimmage this summer, and then again, finishing up the summer schedule with a tournament in Western Montana College for a team jamboree down there. So the kids are going to get a lot of basketball in, and I'm looking forward to putting as much work and as much time as I can with the kids and getting busy. Yes, sir.
Yep, great, thanks for speaking. It's the first opportunity I got to talk to you. I asked for information on you, I didn't, got, didn't, I would have called you if I'd have gone.
Sure.
So that's why I wanted you to know where I stand.
Okay.
That's fine. We're a couple of questions for you now, you're here. Where, are you from Colstrip?
No, I'm from Helen, Montana, grew up.
Where are you, Chris, you live in, where do you live now, do you, you're going to travel to and from?
I'm moving to Thompson Falls, is that where you live? No, I'm moving out of Thompson Falls currently. Yes, my wife just, my wife Maggie just accepted a position as a network administrator, administration for the Lone Rock School District.
Okay, so you're coming, all right.
Relocating to Florence. You know, we're also very excited to have both of our kids enrolled in the Florence School District as well as become part of the community.
And you said you're an educator, what, you're?
Yeah, I'm actually K-12 certified, elementary education is my, where I got my bachelor's degree from Carroll College in Helen, Montana.
Teacher today, okay.
Yes, sir. And then I'm also certified as an industrial technology teacher.
Do you want to clear up your record for me? I didn't want to throw you on the bus like that, that's all I had off Max Preps.
You know, to throw out a number, I couldn't honestly throw out a number, again, six, I've had, of my nine seasons, six of them have been winning seasons. You throw out, you know, summer basketball, all those games.
That's fine, you don't see, I'm going to clear that up if I'm getting that's with the friends, that's all I had, so, okay, thank you for speaking.
Yes, sir. Kobe, I want to address this to you. And I realize that you're a new board member here, and there are certain, there are certain things that you can do as a board member and certain things that you can't.
Okay.
And one of the things that you just did, calling references from another, you know, applicant or whatever, that's totally out of your scheme as a board member, because the board only acts as a board.
So I can't check references on any employee here?
We have, we have, we have both an athletic director and a superintendent who have been assigned that particular assignment. Now, if you have questions, and certainly, you know.
Which I did, I asked for Mr. McGee.
People are going to call us, and often do, and if they do, then we refer them to the individual, usually it's an administrator that's handled that particular situation.
So I base, I base my decision totally off of what I'm told, then? I don't have any research.
No, no, that's not right. When you come to the board meeting and we have discussion, if you've got questions at that point, that's when you can ask all the questions you want to. But as far as going out as a lone trustee and doing what you think somebody else should have done in administration is totally unacceptable.
Is there a law, so that's out, that's against the board?
Lose your legal protection as a trustee.
Well, he emailed it to my trustee account.
I know, what, having the information for you is fine.
It was sent to me, that's what I did.
But then calling, but taking the responsibility of calling another number and checking out, basically, on these references.
Is not my job.
That's totally out of, that's not your job.
That's, that's Derek Sands' job they didn't do?
No, they, they did call the reference of the individual.
You called, you did call one of his references?
You're saying I'm not doing my?
No, you're telling me I'm supposed to leave, no, I didn't say that, Jay told me you didn't do that, you didn't call his references.
So there's no need to, because the top candidate, as we had seen it at that point.
Decision was already made.
At that point, the top candidate, once their references had checked out and there was nothing, no hiccups or glitches or anything that would have given us a big red flag warning, then at that point, there was very little that could have persuaded us differently in a reference check with Mr. Dixon, because in his interview spoke tremendously to me. I don't know about Mr. Bearlocker, forget to him, but it definitely spoke tremendously to me, as well as recent involvement, head coaching experience.
Yeah, I understand that you told me that, I understand.
So I mean, those, those are things that, you know, we didn't take it lightly.
I just, you know, when it was saying was equal opportunity, I think we're supposed to be an equal opportunity employer.
That doesn't mean that we have to check references.
And that's fine, that's okay, and if you guys operate that way, that's fine.
But you need to understand, Kobe, that we need to work as a board.
You better, I need some of these policies, you better start hitting me with them, or I'm going to keep doing things wrong.
Okay, so what we're going to be doing, yeah, I think Ms., I think Cass is going to be having our attorney that represents our history that's going to come, hopefully in the June work meeting, and go over a lot of these things.
Kaliva, Kaliva, Elizabeth?
Elizabeth Kaliva.
She still employed with us?
Yes, she is.
And there's also workshops they have for new trustees in other locations, do you?
So the reason that you did not receive the application and resumes is because that's completely outside of a board member's perspective.
Maybe an email back to me saying that would have stopped a lot of that. I sent four of them. Okay, appreciate it, Tim.
Can I say something?
Yes, Mr. Finley.
I've known Mr. Dixon for a good many years, and I've also known Mr. Bearlocker for a good many years, and I have no doubt about either one's veracity, but if Mr. Bearlocker says, recommends a certain person to me, I need to go with that, because he's on top of it.
All right, Mr. Harris?
Just a, are summer programs mandatory? And the other thing is, I just wanted to say that I don't know either one of these two gentlemen, but how sad, how sad that it has to come to something like this because of the way things have gone around here.
Mr. Bearlocker, would you like to speak to summer programs, just briefly?
With summer programs?
Would you give points of that?
Right now, there's, are we voting on?
No.
It's part of the discussion.
We're still in discussion.
One of the points. Are summer programs mandatory?
It's different, are they mandatory?
No.
The answer is no.
No.
Why do we do them? Because?
Because it opens up opportunities for kids that cannot afford camps, can come to open gym and still see the coach every week, a couple of times during the week in open season, no cost to the student, it's a great time for them to get practice in, let them know, let them interact with other kids in our community. Open gym is, you know, if you don't do it, you're not going to compete.
Makes a difference between having a winning season and not, right?
Absolutely. Right now, I have girls' basketball doing open gym, I have volleyball doing open gym, I have boys' basketball doing open gym.
That wrestling camp makes.
The only ones that I have that are not performing open gym right now are softball, wrestling, and track. Everything else is performing. And, you know, one of the problems we have with the late graduation is that those guys are ready to get into the gym, and the gym's been tied up until June eleventh. We had some confrontation there with janitors and stuff trying to get through this time, and I got to do a better job contacting them and make sure we can get everybody into the old gym to bridge that.
Okay, so Mrs. Nelson, you want to speak?
I did. I just want to say something real quick. My name's Maggie Nelson, I happen to be Boone's wife. For eleven years, I've been supporting him as a wife, a coach, and a mother. For the past nine years, I've been supporting him behind his team bench as a coach. You guys won't find another guy who's going to dedicate as much time to these kids and a program as Boone. I know that firsthand, I live with it, I see it. You know, head coaching takes a lot. It takes a lot of support from families, it takes a lot of support from community, it takes a lot of support from the school. In order to be successful, you have to put in the time and dedicate the hours. Boone does that. I can tell you guys, after varsity basketball games, when we go home at night, our game, our night doesn't end. Boone spends the next three hours reviewing film after every game, road game or home game, this is what he does. Will spend three hours reviewing film to game plan and make changes for whatever needs to be done for the next game. I, you know, as his wife, of course, I'm going to support him, but I just want you guys to know, there's, you're not going to find somebody who's going to dedicate as much time to the success of these kids as Boone will. That's all I wanted to say.
So I'm just going to make a comment, since I can. I don't want you guys to feel like that, that, welcome to Florence, or not welcome to Florence, little tiny schools, I went to high school in Reed Point, okay? So little tiny schools live and die by their basketball program. That's why there's so many people sitting here in the audience today. So it's, we'd be arguing over whoever was sitting here, I'm sure, because everybody would have an opinion. So it's not personal, it's just how we are about basketball. And so I just want you to say, to know that, that it's not, you know, this isn't personal about either of you, this is about basketball and what the school's going to, going to benefit for the kids. So, no, you know, okay, that's just my two cents. All right, so any further discussion?
Take one more question. I'd like to welcome you, I think it's great that you've come, because I know that the wife is always the best part of a good coach, and I look forward to supporting you no matter what happens with this. I just felt my rights were violated and I wanted to stand up for myself, it's that At the risk of getting emotional, you know, I spent ten years with face installation and no side of my home and dedicated to kids in this school, and this man's known you for twenty years. Wrote me a letter of recommendation when I was twenty-five years old, knows my dedication to kids and the work they have done for this school. So it just kind of hurt that I was not treated with the respect I thought I deserved, it's that simple.
Okay, so we're going to call for the question, and does everybody know what the motion is here? All right, so all in favor of the motion to hire Mr. Nelson? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
All right, welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
You're going to let us know.
Mr. Barlow, I was stretching.
Okay. All right, so we are on to.
Can I interrupt real quick? I just want to shake his hand, because I got to go to work and see my kids.
Okay, sure.
There's nothing else I can do. So yes, nice job, it's plain as stone, Boone is recommending Kyle as his assistant coach in the JV program, and I am recommending to the board that be the case, that Kyle is continued to stay in our program and move up to the JV position. So because he's in-house, it's not something that we open up and advertise, but we will have a C-Squad position that we will need to open up and advertise, so the recommendation is to move forward with Kyle Hanson as the JV boys' basketball coach.
Also move. Second, discussion?
So you're, we don't have to open, you're saying that you don't have to open the position because he's in-house?
Correct. We have in-house transfers.
In-house kids first give, right?
And then for teaching positions, we advertise in-house for ten days before we go out of the house, and like with Miss Riedley, she wanted to go through, up to fifth grade, and, you know, we talk to those individuals, speak with them, and do an interview with them, and with Kyle, he's a quality individual, so. Questions in the.
So further discussion? Call for the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome, thank you for hanging in with us.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we need a motion to move to open the C-Squad, because we're going to have to advertise that, right?
Right.
Okay.
I'll move to open the C-Squad boys' basketball coaching position for the thirteen fourteen school year.
Second, discussion? Call for the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Somebody? All right, so wrestling coach, assistant wrestling coach.
Okay, we have the assistant wrestling coach. We need to open that position.
I'll move to open up an assistant wrestling coach position for the thirteen fourteen school year.
Second, discussion? Call for the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Assistant football coach, we have the resignation of Mr. Larson as our assistant football coach, so he's just with an opening.
I'll move to open up an assistant football coach in position for the thirteen fourteen school year.
Second, discussion? Call for the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
And then Jessica Sante, who was our assistant track coach, was also an assistant volleyball coach, and with her moving across the state to accept a teaching job, we have a big vacancy in our volleyball program that needs to be filled.
I'll move to open up an assistant volleyball coach in position for the thirteen fourteen school year.
Second, discussion? Call for the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
And we have middle school volleyball coach, Jeff Muller, who is our head varsity basketball coach and has coached in the middle school before, is interested in being a coach in the middle school once again.
Also move. Second, discussion? Call for the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so now we're going to go to reports. Mr. Gervaski, you get to go first.
We're done?
Yay.
Graduation went well, thank you guys for attending. It was, I think everything ran pretty well.
Thank you.
It was toasty, a little on the long side, we're exploring some different options. One thing that we've tossed around for a couple of years now is to actually move our scholarship awarding night to a different night and then maybe do the slideshow that evening also, just to kind of separate it, too. I know we like it, but at the same time, we can run the slideshow before graduation up on the screen, and I've seen quite a few schools that do that. And then we also have those kiosks out in the gym, are out in the foyer that we can run them on there, too. So those are some possibilities we're looking at, just because it takes so long. We have some classes, you know, hitting seventy-plus coming up here in the next couple of years, and we have fifty-nine for today, so it could take a while.
I don't think we need to get up kids, they're due.
They do, like they're due, I agree with that.
I thought it was just awesome. Even though I had to sit in on that gym for two and whatever hours, I loved it, and I was, it's one of those warm and cozy nights.
Yeah.
When, you know, you can just sit there and really appreciate all the teachers have done and the parents, and, you know, it was a great night. Band was good, I mean, it was just, it was awesome.
Well.
But we would certainly entertain the discussion of having a slideshow before.
Well, we'd entertain it.
Yes, we'd entertain it.
I definitely would go though.
And then on the ACT, ACT scores, if you guys remember, they announced that nine or ten students had actually gotten a twenty-seven or better, it was actually one more, too. Laura Austin's daughter, Courtney, she took her test as a sophomore when she was in Indiana, so she was also higher than a twenty-seven, so we ended up having eleven students with better than a twenty-seven on their ACTs. Very impressive. And then all, we have preliminaries on ACT tests that the junior class took, the PLN, which is the pre-ACTs that the sophomores took, we'll have the SAT results coming back that students took, the CRT results that everybody took, so we'll compile all of that stuff first and do some data mining on that, so that when the teachers come back, they can explore how to better get students ready for college readiness and all that, that's really coming down the pipe, that's getting pushed hard, you know, to be college-ready. So we're going to explore how to look at that with the data, so, and we're done.
I want to ask how the choir trip was?
The choir trip went well. The choir trip went well. Uh, they had a really, really good time. Um, everything went pretty dang smooth, so that was nice. Um, it was tough on the students though for the timing of it, to be honest. A lot of the kids, they had to cram in finals, um, two, three, four finals the week they left, before they left. And that was kinda hard on some of those kids, trying to get all of that put into place. Um, the, uh, just doing it at the end of the year. But they did, um, when they were in Seattle, they did house stays, you know, and that all went really well too. That's always something to worry about. Um, but it went well, so everything, everything worked out pretty good. She'd really like to do it again, um, not next year, but in another year or so. But I'd really like her to look at a different timeframe of when to go. Um, so it makes it kinda hard. Um, and then the final thing I have for you guys is, um, with the calendar. And that is that we had so many kids checking out early this year because of our late ending date. Um, it was super, super hectic. Um, trying to get those kids all checked out, trying to pay attention to their attendance, trying to pay attention to their final grades and all of that. It was really, really difficult. Way, way, way more kids checking out early, um, than are involved with, uh, 4H, for example. Um, we had kids that were out for camps. Um, we had kids that were out for Boys State, Girls State. Um, we had kids that were out for rodeo finals. Um, we had kids that were out for jobs. Um, example, the Montana Conservation Corps, uh, jobs that a lot of the kids applied for for summer work started Monday. So, they had to check out last week in order to get everything done. So, that's pushing teachers to try to get finals done earlier for those kids, which means then you're, you're looking at creating different finals for different kids, or you're ending your classes early and having to babysit kids for a couple of days, that type of thing. So, it's pretty difficult. Um, and next year, we're going even later, and we have three days, 'cause we have a non-Wednesday. So, just something I'd like you guys to think about in the future when we look at calendars. And it's not just our high school.
Yeah, I was gonna say, middle school experienced similar situation.
All-Star football game. All-Star football game. Um, as of, I think on Wednesday of last week, or Tuesday of last week, we already had, I think, 30 early checkouts.
Does the calendar, the calendar and committee recognize all this? Because when it comes to us, we're relying on them and all their staff.
Yeah, we had two groups, remember that, that kinda did things. We had the calendar committee that created a calendar that they liked. We als, but they also created a calendar that got voted on. And the staff vote, um, was heavier on the other one with the later date. The calendar committee's recommendation was a different calendar. So, that's where it got mixed up.
That, that gets together, because as a board, I think we try to support what comes to us. If the teachers are asking for this, then, you know, then that's what we try to support, so...
Generally, if you, my feeling is if you create a committee, the committee makes that decision and they make the recommendation. You don't have to take it out to a vote for everybody, 'cause not everybody understands what's going on. So, if the committee does that, when they make that recommendation, that's what we should go with.
So, did the committee feel empowered then to, to not take it to the vote, or...
Yeah.
I think they are now. The teachers union and the committee are in line now, where the committee will act in their commission.
All right, well, bring it to us next year and we'll talk about it again, right? Okay.
Any other questions?
I think we're good, unless we missed some other great fun event we should be hearing about.
Well, Margaret went on that choir trip.
Yeah, it was good.
She hasn't stopped grinning yet. She's been on.
I know they liked the music experience. I always forget what it's called, that museum where they go in. And they actually get, um, a set of headphones and they walk through this music experience place. And they get, everywhere they go, it's playing something different. It's the history of music of Seattle, basically. But it's a history of rock and roll too, but it's a history of the Seattle area specifically. There's a lot of Jimi Hendrix, a lot of Beatles stuff and everything else, so that was pretty neat. And then they all got to go into a studio and play guitar, and they had a lady there that showed them how to play and everything. It was, they really had a good time.
Well, and her timing, I think, of picking the trip had to do with her connection to somebody there.
Is that and sports season clearing it out so that she can get more kids to go.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, but she had, she had somebody that she coordinated with on that end too, which was kind of a deciding factor. But I bet you she can come up with something different next time. Okay, all right.
Miss...
Well, so we had our final SOAR assembly, and we had that in the gym. We invited the drum line to come and perform, so the kids loved that as part of their final assembly. And then we tried something new. We had root beer floats for the entire elementary student body following that assembly, kind of as a culminating celebration, which the kids really loved. So, that went well. So, we'll set our sights for next year for those recognition assemblies. Uh, we had our track and field day last Friday, and I think for the first time in five or six years, we didn't get rained out.
We did good, yeah.
We had beautiful weather. Everybody had a great time. It was a lot of fun. And usually on track and field day, we coincide our volunteer luncheon at that same time to recognize, um, all the volunteers who come into our school and give up their time and energy. And so, we had our volunteer luncheon, and that was very well attended. So, we appreciate all the volunteers that, uh, support our students and our staff. And finally, um, we had applied for the bronze recognition award for NBI, and we were notified that we will receive that award at elementary level for the first time this year, so we're excited about that.
Can you explain a little bit about that again?
Yes, for NBI, the Montana Behavioral Initiative, and that's also part of the SOAR assembly, um, the NBI team worked really hard to meet the criteria. The bronze award is kind of the entry-level award, um, that, uh, the state recognizes schools that are making an effort to try and address, uh, student behaviors and teach student expectations.
Your NBI is your bullying thing, right?
Right, it's the, it addresses more than the bullying.
For people that don't know. For the people, I guess, and it's sometimes when you ask, you know, there's people that don't know.
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. And Ms. Backes?
Middle school will also be going, uh, pick up our award next week. We're, we'll be getting the silver this year. So, we've been at this for a few years. It's quite a conference, the NBI. It's a thousand people. And so, you go up on stage in front of a whole thousand and accept the award and have your picture taken with Denise Juno. It's kinda, it's kinda fun.
Well, that is.
Yeah, so, anyway, we'll be doing that next week. The Anna Horson's will be going along with me to NBI. And then, uh, I thought promotion went well last night. Thanks for coming. I, I thought...
We were sweet. We were an hour. It was sweet.
Instead of it was gonna be 45 minutes.
I know, I know.
15, but it's okay.
That extra speech, but I thought it went really well.
It was very good.
The cheer member was...
Oh, that was, that was awesome. Yeah.
It was impressive to see how many people filled up the gym. It was quite a crowd.
Well, well attended, so...
But I like the way that you work it so that the, the students can come up in groups and share what they, I mean, I, I mean, I remember...
We try to sort of focus on the kids.
Yeah.
'Cause it's a celebration at the end of their elementary years and then moving into high school, so... Anyway, um, yeah, that went well. And then the dance that followed went smoothly too.
And thanks for the food at the...
Well, that's the parent association that, that puts that on, so make sure that they get recognition.
Yes.
They did a nice job at the reception.
Yeah, the reception was really good.
Yeah, it was.
You went for the reception?
I did.
Yeah, it was beyond cake and punch this year.
Yeah, they had lunch meat and buns and a whole business of fruit and cheese and everything.
But I was just knowing that.
Yeah, they did a nice job. And then, um, we said, I met with the parents this evening before, um, the parent association before this meeting, and we set the meet and greet potluck that we start, they started last year for August 28th at six o'clock. So, that's kinda taking the place of our back-to-school night. It's the same type of thing, but the kids come and get their schedules. They had a potluck last year. We, I talk a little bit, the parent association talks a little bit, and then we just kinda, kind of like get-together, back-to-school get-together. So, we set that. I'm planning for next year already. And trying to finish this one up. Thank you.
Is your bear locker?
Yeah, Big Sky High School has hired a new cross-country coach. And, uh, she's very enthusiastic and works very hard, and she's got a very good name in, in the cross-country business. Uh, since we co-op with them, um, we weren't able to get her with our students here, so I hope to send an outreach, a phone call, along with what time our open gyms are for all the kids and all the sports, once all the coaches get organized. So, those athletes and students can know exactly when open gym is and stuff like that. Like I said before, four out of the seven already active in it. Summer programs are very important. And like I said before, you know, it's the kids that can't afford to go to camp and stuff are getting a great job. Uh, you know, our coaches come in and coach and stuff during that time. Very legal and stuff. Anything can, anything between June 1st and August 1st, you can coach. Um, we need to hire seven more coaches, uh, which is a lot. We have had some turnover this year, and I appreciate all the coaches that have coached this year. They do an outstanding job. I appreciate Dennis for down working on the football field. We had some wear and tear in our football field. We went down there, we bought some sod and stuff, and he did a lot of hard work and irrigated it. He's taking care of it, and it's gonna be a great addition to our football field this fall. Our programs this year, out of the eight, um, everybody succeeded. It was a great year. They had a lot of state places. Uh, our band, our choir, our choral, um, our speech and debate, our, um, drama program, incredible. These guys take a lot of pride. There's a lot of schools that would like to be Florence Carlton. And if you want to attend an AD meeting with me, you'll be amazed. They really think we have it going on here, and we do. We're very, very fortunate. It's hard to get to this level, and it's hard to stay at. And we've been very fortunate, and it says a lot about our parents and our kids. And I appreciate it a lot. It's a lot of fun. It's great to come to work every day. Um, the schedules are all set. Uh, we do have some changes probably in softball, and that will be what the new coach gets hired on. Uh, we always have spring break, which is really hard. Uh, with our regular scheduling, we always end up playing Loyola on our spring break. And that is also the time that we have our foreign trips with our students. So, right now, we just schedule it in with Loyola during spring break, and then lots of times it gets changed, because it's a big game. And we want both teams to be at the maximum, you know, performance level and stuff like that. But we try not to make changes, but there always is things that happen. Wrestling schedule, I haven't been able to contact a wrestling coach for the last couple of weeks. He's been out in Eastern Montana, doing some training and stuff like that. There might be a few changes in there, but not very many. Um, I wanna thank the Booster Club. John, Dan, and I attended a Booster Club meeting here last week, and, uh, those ladies do a great job, and we appreciate all the support and stuff that they do for us. And, uh, and we're working on maybe a golf tournament. I'm having a hard time getting the coaches to buy in on that. Um, they do a lot. And for them to spend their whole summer out there, you know, coaching and then planning on the Booster Club, this might take over the golf tournament a lot more and get it out of the, the coaches' hands, I really appreciate. We're out of the mail business, basically, with, uh, with, uh, fundraising money. There's no way that we can be applicable anymore, and so there will not be any mails by our, our school district fundraising money or anything like that. I just wanna thank you guys for supporting us, and I appreciate it.
Can I ask when's homecoming?
Homecoming is, I think, 7... Uh, 28, excuse me. Volleyball will be home on the 27th. Volleyball at Roanoke on the 26th, and then our football game will be the 28th at 1:00. And there is not a Grizzly game that weekend, and that's why. You know, people always wanna know why we pick certain weekend.
Sure, that's fine.
And we try not to have that.
And when's the first home game for football?
The first home game will be Townsend on September 6th.
Okay.
We really try hard to keep things off schoolboy, evening nights. Sometimes there's just no way. Certain schools will not play on Wednesday night like Loyola and stuff like that. Say it's, uh, you know, heavy a weekend, or, uh, you know, holy week or something, uh, it's a problem. So, thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. McGee?
All right, well, so I'm trying to get on Booster Club. That was one of the things that I planned on speaking to. But one of the things that we have done recently is we spent a week with our auditor. The auditor has come in and gone over the finances of the school district, and they currently are, uh, taking their data back to their offices and are compiling their compliance report for the school district. We hope to have, uh, Kim Downing here in August to go over that report with the Board of Trustees and to explain, you know, the findings of the audit. I do want you to know that, you know, when it's all said and done and the auditor is ready to walk out of the office, I ask, how does Florence Carlton compare? When you've had a chance to look at our business, how do we compare? And to all the other districts that you guys serve. And Denning and Downing is one of the bigger firms in western Montana. They, they do quite a few school districts. And he said, without a doubt, you guys were well above average with your, with your business model. So, that's always nice to hear. Mrs. Morgan, you know, I would say it hit her probably the worst time to have an auditor show up, which was the beginning of June. We're trying to run three payrolls out the door in a rapid succession, because by contract, the teachers have to have their checks when they check out. And this year, we were dealing with a lot of that Affordable Care Act issues that are now coming into play, that are now beginning to affect us as a school district in trying to understand these new rules. I will tell you this, uh, we called in Blue Cross and Blue Shield representatives, we called in Allegiance, our flex plan administrators, in to do some staff meetings. We have gone to trainings in April and stuff to try to understand this. And the amazing thing to me is what we were told in April changed by the 1st of June. And things are changing so rapidly with the interpretation of the rules on Affordable Care Act, that Blue Cross and Blue Shield and Allegiance do not wanna put out brochures telling you what it means and what the rules mean, because a week later, they'll be changing their answers to those questions. So, they are very good about getting together with us and explaining things, but we've had some very strong conversations with the staff, trying to explain their benefits and the rules and regulations with regard to their benefits. But we're, I feel comfortable that we're gonna be heading in next year lined out and ready to go. And I will assure you, not all school districts are on that same page. So, that's been stressful also. And then, you know, to top it all off, you know, I would say that Mrs. Morgan did a very nice job working with the auditors. And, you know, there are a few things and you'll see a recommendation in here for us to provide some more consultation for her. It's not so much because she doesn't know what she's doing. It has to do with the complexity of our business and what we do, making sure that the people we bring in, that we are providing the correct support and training for them. So when we get to that part of the agenda, we'll talk a little bit more about that. And that's all I have at this time.
Okay, so we're going to go on to new business, budget amendment resolution.
As we talked about the subject drain field, which I would commend this board on its thought process and on the way you've deliberated on this issue. You've done a nice job understanding and listening to the engineer. And I believe the solution that you've come up with by moving the drain fields to the west of the district's office is going to be the safest option for our kids. But it does come with a price and as such, we put out a proclamation for a budget amendment. And at this time, we need to move to adopt a budget amendment for the school district in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand to fix the embarrassing problems with our subject drain field.
Discussion? Call for the question. Did you want to, did you have a, no, you're just...
I'm sorry, I was just...
Okay. So call for the question.
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we also have the debt service fund. We have monies that have been collected through protest of taxes that have been placed in the debt service. And we need to move those monies into a fund account where we can actually utilize those monies. We talked about moving these monies into the building reserve fund. And that way, for projects, whether it be the roof or whether it be the drain field, we could then utilize those monies on facility construction needs of the district. So the board has asked at this time to transfer or move to direct the district clerk to transfer those funds from the debt service into the building reserve fund so that we can access those monies. And those monies will be necessary to help complete the subject drain field project.
Also move. Discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then we're on to business manager training contract. I will let Mrs. Morgan, if you'd like, to kind of chime in and share a little bit about what this is about.
Okay, the two main areas he was talking about is the fixed assets. To do an inventory of our fixed assets, update our schedules so they're both, you know, comparable, apples and apples. And about coding, so that as purchase orders are coded, they're coded properly, maybe they were five thousand dollars. Should have a special object code and that's for coding so we can pick those up and go to close out at year end. And the other item was the grants, miscellaneous grants. And have what's called a project recorder code. And that's like a little tag item. So we have your sequence of accounting codes, but you have another sequence of numbers that will tag that particular grant from the revenues to expenses. So at year end, we have to reconcile all that. You may have, say, ten different grants. This should just like match it all together really nicely. So they'll come in and help us get all that together, set up, so that from that point forward, it should be, as long as our personnel too does the coding properly, we should be able to really do a quick, a quicker, more efficient way of reconciling. Because it's a nightmare. I talked to Kathy and she said she thinks it takes days to deal. And this is how...
Kath Banandor.
Kath Banandor, yeah.
And so essentially, when we talk about the fixed asset, you'll recall back in two thousand and seven, we hired a company to come in and do a fixed asset inventory for the school district. And they recommend that about every five to seven years, you do a comprehensive review of that process of what it is that you do with your fixed asset inventory. Make sure you're in line and in compliance. And so, you know, one of the things it falls on the clerk is this process. And so in order to make sure that Mrs. Morgan, who is new to the position, understands bringing in some assistance to help train in that matter. The contract that you see in your packet deals with a minimum and a maximum amount. And what we are looking at is for the board to approve consultation contract in the amount of not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
Also move. Discussion? I want to say that anything that makes her job more efficient is...
And when she was describing it, it sounded like Chinese. I'm thinking, I am so glad you are doing that.
Is that, is that a one-on-one deal or...
Yeah, they're going to bring, they're going to bring a person down that's going to be sitting down here with us doing some training of the clerk.
Would it be beneficial to have somebody else sit in there too?
Yeah, we're going to have Louise and Donna and myself will all be at times involved in this. Because one of the things that we're faced with is Louise, who does a lot of the entering of first order numbers into the system, she needs to have a little better understanding as to why it is that she's doing what she's doing.
When the coding goes, goes a certain place and so coding's a big factor.
Because if she codes things incorrectly, it's going to cause her a ton of headaches. So the thing is, we want to make sure she's involved with it. So there's going to be multiple people involved in this training.
Yeah.
Get as many people listening as you can.
Yep.
Okay, so any further discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, each year, we have student accident insurance that we provide. And just so you're aware, you know, the board, by approving the provider for the student accident insurance, we make it available to all students. And when we do so, we say, okay, here's this accident insurance. If the students don't accept it, then the fact is, if they fall on our property and through no fault of our own, that we were not negligent in their falling on the property, they cannot come back and make a claim against us. This is one of those things that protects the school district against claims. And so that Northwest Scholastic Insure you've hired on in the last few years to provide that type of coverage for the school district.
Is that, I mean, is it, I mean, I'm sure it must be fairly reasonable, you know, for families, or is it...
About forty dollars a year, they can pick up this insurance policy.
Yeah, for what they pay. Yeah.
Make a motion to slight Northwestern Scholastic Insurers to provide student accident insurance and catastrophic coverage insurance covering store students for two thousand and thirteen, fourteen school year.
Discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then under summer sports program, each year, the board approves summer sports activity program as written in the master agreement for the teachers' union. And so at this time, the board has asked to approve wages not to exceed six hundred dollars, at fifteen dollars an hour per sport for each coach. So Terry Mackey, Lou Nelson, Brian Newman, Jamie Mear, Donna Hemfield, Jeff Mahler are all individuals that we would seek to have working with our kids for up to a total of forty hours over the summer.
Also move.
Also move. Discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor? Aye.
And finally, we have handbook changes that we are bringing forward. Mr. Bear Locker has extracurricular handbook that I believe was in your packet.
And it's the same, just so you guys know, because I kind of always put this one together to tie this in with the high school handbook. The one big thing is the last page. And it's brand new. It's not, it's the inside of the last page, page eight. And that's a concussion deal. And that is, we have to provide information to parents and students and coaches regarding concussion, concussion syndromes. And we have to have, all coaches have to take a training through NFHS, the National Federation of High Schools, their concussion training deal. And it's a free concussion thing for them to take class, but they have to have that certificate. And so what this is, is just basic information. The parents will also receive a checklist that they understand what the concussion is and what the procedure is. The student will get the same thing. And so that's kind of what it is. Basically, what it is, is if a kid is even suspected of having a concussion, they're not going to get on the playing field again until they are cleared by medical professional. Okay, so it's a real important thing. It's state code that's mandated us to do this, so we have that in there. This is the general information part of it in the handbook. For each sport that they play, they'll be filling out a concussion handouts. It goes along with the activity handbook, sign off, follow the rules.
All right, I'll follow up on that. We also have a new education program for coaches. It has some history information in it and that's one of the reasons they went to it. They're going to charge fifty dollars per coach to take this test from now on. And before, at this time, it was free, I believe, the last five years.
The new one, the last five years.
Not free. All the coaches are required to take that before they coach with athletes. And so there's going to be an expense.
If they've taken the test this year, they're still good for two years and then they'll take it. But if they've taken the test prior to this year, they have to take the new test. So it's, and that's all through the National Federation of High Schools too. And they've got a really, really nice program, not only for coaches, but also for parents that are involved in scholastic activities on how to behave, which is really, really nice information.
I've taken the test certified at it before. It's a lot better than the high school association test, and shoulders above.
Mr. Stigler?
Will middle school coaches be involved in that coaches' test as well?
No, it's, well, we'd like you to, just because it really helps, but it's not a requirement. High school, it's a, it's a high school association requirement.
Is that the only...
But on the concussion one, yeah, I think so. Because it's free.
That's free, so yeah.
We've talked about that. That's the only change that's in there, yeah.
Okay, so Mr. Group, do we need to do these one at a time and vote or do we...
Yes.
Do a one at a time and vote on this? Let's do it that way? Okay. So I need a motion on this, on the athletic extracurricular handbook. How much do we accept the extracurricular handbook for the thirteen, fourteen school year? Second. Audit first for you, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Discussion?
So are you going to call it co-curricular now instead of extracurricular?
Yes. It is co-curricular, yeah. And we've had it as co-curricular for the last several years. Because it does involve band and choir. And then there's also information that you guys don't get, that the coaches get, that tell how they letter and that type of thing.
Okay, so any further discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, there you go with that. All right, Mr. Valska.
Okay, on the student handbook, for the most part, it's all the same. I've added one thing on page five. If you go under valedictorian, salutatorian, the very last sentence, I added a sentence to it. And it has stated, these honors are generally known at semester of senior year for valedictorian, salutatorian. However, students who drop out of high honors course during second semester or their senior year will not be eligible. The part I added is, second semester grades will continue to be counted towards a final decision. Because I don't want to see students stop. I think if they're valedictorian, salutatorian, the expectation should be, they can carry that all the way through to the end of the school year. Their senior year, they're not here for three and a half years, they're here for four. So I added that part to it. I add, all right, on page seven, attendance was just moved from behavior or from behavioral section up to just in front on its own as attendance. I think it's something that stands on its own that way, so I just thought it was in the wrong place. And then at the back, under dress code on page twenty-six, I added pictures. I've had these up on the walls throughout the school year so that we can refer to it fairly quickly. But I added it in here this time so that way, parents can understand what's going on too. Remember, this is always posted on the high school website so that students, parents, anybody can look at the handbook. So it's in there as a PDF file. But I just wanted to add this in here because I think it helps out. It's easy to point. Oh, sorry.
Very good. All right, so should we have a motion on this handbook?
I'll make a motion to approve the high school handbook for two thousand and fifteen, fourteen.
Second. Okay, discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, middle school, who's back us?
Okay, on the middle school co-curricular handbook, the only thing that's changed or added, actually added to, is the section on concussions at the back. And it's the same information that Mr. Valska received.
Page, are you on there already?
Uh, mine isn't. Which is at the very back.
At the very back?
There's a back sheet. Yeah, it's after page seven. Back sheet for athletes, for patients, and signs and symptoms and then a sign out sheet.
Somehow, we don't have page eight.
I don't have page eight either. Mine starts at seven. And that goes into the... Are you on the co-curricular, are you?
Page eight's after all of that.
I'm, I'm...
You're on the handbook.
You're in there.
I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong page.
Co-curricular has...
Oh, that, oh, no. All right, I'm sorry.
Okay, this, page seven?
So if you go to page seven and then the next page, it should have...
And then like, is there a reason for that?
I think that was just...
Just some, some place to write names?
So it was just a error of the caution sheet?
Yeah, I log that, another error coming up here too. In the next handbook, anyway. So you got to the concussion, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's co-curricular. Okay?
Can I say another difference?
That's the only difference, that's the only change with the handbook, is addition.
Make a motion to accept the middle school co-curricular manual for the thirteen, fourteen school year.
Second.
Discussion? Call for the question? Oh, I'm sorry.
This is absolutely the wrong time to ask this question. Let's see where we paid the warrants to dogs, we're volunteer. Is that high school or is that the whole?
It checks the whole, it'll check the whole school, all the lockers, wherever we ask them to check. We can have them do cars, we can go to locker rooms.
Is it all clean?
Actually, back in the fall, I actually asked if you would take them up through our property up here by the park and there was a car parked on our property up there that it hit on. So we came down to call the sheriff to come in and take a look. And by the time the sheriff came down, the car was moved.
A lot of schools. Good, that's great.
All right, so further discussion? Call for the question? All those in favor?
Okay, then on the student handbook, the middle school student handbook, the, let's see, is it the even number pages didn't get copied? No, that's the way mine is. Is that yours, like, that is? So I'll have to bring it back at the, I'll bring it back at the end of the, on the twenty-sixth, or do you...
Okay, so we're going to take this one?
So sorry about that, I don't know.
Okay. Okay, Miss Ella.
Okay, um, not very many changes to the elementary handbook, just mostly some updates. And we'll have to update K-five staff, but all our updates are in red. Just take a minute and come through. There aren't any significant changes, just cleaning up some, tightening up in some language, clarifying. The final page is new, or that, excuse me, the next to the final page, that has to do with our SOAR, our student expectations of what we're teaching. A good thing for parents to have, to reinforce what we're doing.
All right, so any...
Any questions about elementary changes?
Make a motion to accept the elementary SOAR handbook for the thirteen, fourteen school year.
Second. Discussion? I guess I have a question and it kind of applies to everybody. Do we have a place in here where we're asking parents if it's okay if we put their email in a, you know, Booster Club needs their email, the parent teacher association needs their email. Are we, are we getting people's permission in that, in some way?
I can get student, it's hard to get the parent in the handbook. Because they sign off on the student information. If they disagree of releasing any of that student information, they have to let the school know. But to ask for a parent's one within the handbook, I don't have any work.
Okay.
And I can do that on the school's website. We can do an information, we do an information sheet that way, you should send out to parents that ask for that type of information. And so what we can do is to put a check there if they agree for us to share it out to school. Thanks.
Okay. Yeah, because that was one thing that Booster Club is trying to build a database of people that might be interested in hearing from us. And I'm sure that coaches want that for their kids and whatever, trying to drum up parent involvement.
You know, and I think that for a communication tool, we can work with the parents. So if your kids come in, they're going to be part of the football team. Ball coach can sit down at the parent meeting and say, here's the list, we need your numbers, we need your emails and stuff, because Booster Club supports us very well and we want them to be able to communicate with you. And I think at that point, you're probably going to give ninety, ninety-five percent of the parents who will step right up and do that.
Okay. Okay, so any further discussion? All right, call for the question. All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, you guys, thank you for your hard work on that. So we are at adjournment. Thank you, guys, for hanging in. This is always a long one.
It's been a nice meeting.
This is our chance to...